All right, good morning, everyone. I call the meeting of January 25th, 2022, our county board meeting to order. Can I please ask Member Rutledge to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, members. Please remain standing as we welcome our invocation speaker today, Imam Darwa Sadi from the Islamic Center of Wheaton.
This is chapter number six, verse number 151 and 152 and 153. Say, "Come, I will tell you what your Lord has really forbidden you. Do not ascribe anything as a partner to him. Be good to your parents. Do not kill your children in fear of poverty. We will provide for you and for them. Stay well away from committing obscenities, whether openly or in secret. Do not take the life God has made sacred, except by right." This is what he commands you to do. Perhaps you will use your reason. Stay well away from the property of orphans, except with the best intention, until they come of age. Give full measure and weight according to justice. We do not burden any soul with more than it can bear. When you speak, be just, even if it concerns a relative. Keep any promises you make in God's name. This is what he commands you to do, so that you may take heed. This is my path, leading street, so follow it, and do not follow other ways. They will lead you away from it. This is what he commands you to do, so that you may refrain from wrongdoings. Thank you so much.
There has been a request to allow remote participation from Member Garcia under Section 7A of the Open Meetings Act. Pursuant to Section 7A of the Open Meetings Act, if a quorum of the members of the body is physically present, as we have today, as required by Section 2.01, a majority of the public body may allow a member of that body to attend the meeting by other means if a member is prevented from physically attending because of personal illness. Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Welcome, Member Garcia. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin. Chavez. Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Here.
Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Here.
Schwartzy. Selman. Tornatori. And Zay.
All right, to start off our proclamations this morning, I'd like to invite our District Four colleagues to join us up at the podium, as well as the Wheaton North football coach, as well as our Wheaton North team captains, Mark Fortucci and Ross Danzil. All right. This morning, we are thrilled to honor the Wheaton North Falcons. The school's football team ended a 35-year drought in November, when they posted a 35-6 victory over St. Rita's in the Class 7A state game title. To say that we are proud, or that I am a proud Wheaton North alumna, is probably an understatement. I'm joined by our Wheaton North head coach, our team captains, as well as our District Four representatives, who I think could probably say they're also equally as proud. Please allow me to read our proclamation, and then if our coach would like to say a few words? Whereas the players, coaching staff, and alumni of the Wheaton North High School team have proven they possess a solid foundation of teamwork, commitment, and talent building toward a championship season; and whereas the Falcons won the Illinois High School Association Class 7A State Football Championship with a 35-6 win over St. Rita High School on November 27th in DeKalb; and whereas through their historic playoff run, the Falcons went 13-1 with 10 straight wins, averaging nearly 30 points per game and outscoring opponents by 285 points; and whereas this is the fourth time in school history that Wheaton North has won a football championship, and the first time since 1986; and whereas we commend the student athletes, coaches, athletic administrators, and entire high school community for their passion, spirit, camaraderie, and character through this incredible season, and for the team's positive representation of DuPage County. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Ashley Selman, on behalf of Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the DuPage County Board, and members of the county board, do hereby recognize and commend the Wheaton North High School football team and coaching staff for its IHSA Class 7A football state championship, and for being valued residents of DuPage County. Can I get a first and a second?
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you very much. My name is Joe Wardinsky. I am the head football coach at Wheaton North, and I brought our captains with us here today. We have Ross Danzil, number 33, right here as a junior. He played linebacker and tight end for us. And number five is Mark Fortucci. Mark's a senior, and Mark's going to go off and play quarterback next year at Holy Cross, out in the Patriot League. So he's got an opportunity to go on and play at the next level, and that's something that the game of football is providing for a lot of our kids, is an opportunity to go on and get an education in college and continue to play the game that they love. And I think that, you know, playing in our conference, in the Duquesne Conference, and playing the high caliber teams that we do every week really prepared us for the postseason. And we played strong teams in the postseason, Brother Rice and St. Rita and some of those schools. But these kids didn't bat an eye, they didn't back down. They were ready to face whatever the challenge was that week. And I think that those skills that they picked up along the way are going to enable them to do great things when they're done playing the game of football. And I just want to thank these kids for not only the fun that we had this year as a group of coaches and players coming together, working toward a common goal, but the leadership that our senior class showed this year, especially under Mark's direction. The leadership that we got from this senior group is probably what put us over the top. We've had other years where we've had talented kids and talented teams. But this senior class, we never had to encourage them to work harder. We never had to prod or poke, or they were always ready to come to work, come to school, ready to work, and put in a good day and try to get better as a team. So I think overall, it was a great accomplishment for our school. They mentioned 35 years since we had won a state title on the north side of town. But it was a great accomplishment. We appreciated the community getting behind us this year. We had great turnout in the postseason, the Brother Rice game at our place, the semifinal. They were standing five and six deep around the fence line, and every seat was taken. And we won that game and went on to DeKalb and got to play in the state final. And I think these kids could tell you when we walked out and heard the roar of the crowd and saw half the town of Wheaton there to support us, it really motivated these kids to go out and do their best, and they did that. So very proud of them, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here today to speak to you. Thank you.
All right. Next up, please, if Member Chaplin could please join me, as well as Karen Ayala from our health department? She's, I don't know if I, oh, there she is. All right. Each year, as you know, we offer a proclamation that seeks to raise awareness of Kawasaki disease. An illness that comes on suddenly, usually strikes young people, and causes a host of unusual symptoms that can be very dangerous. You may remember, in the early days of the COVID-19 pandemic, the virus mimicked some symptoms of Kawasaki disease impacting children. We have asked our DuPage Health Department Executive Director Karen Ayala, as well as Member Liz Chaplin, to join us this year for our Kawasaki disease awareness proclamation. Whereas DuPage County recognizes Kawasaki disease as a serious illness characterized by inflammation of blood vessels throughout the body, primarily affecting young children, and can lead to permanent heart disease, lifelong aneurysms, stent placement, heart transplants, skin disorders, and childhood anxiety; whereas Kawasaki disease, more commonly known as KD, is the number-one cause of permanent heart disease in children and is diagnosed in approximately 5,000 U.S. children annually, who are primarily under the age of eight; and whereas recent instances of young adults suffering heart attacks in their 20s and 30s show evidence of old aneurysms and a misdiagnosis of KD as a child; and whereas after the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, clinicians discovered some children who had been diagnosed with COVID-19 had experienced a new syndrome resembling KD called multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children, or MISC, and is characterized by persistent fever, rash, hypertension, gastrointestinal symptoms, and organ dysfunction. And whereas MISC may begin weeks after a child is infected with COVID-19, and the child may have been infected from an asymptomatic contact, and in some cases, the child and their caregivers may not even know they've been infected; and whereas the American Heart Association, the World Health Federation, and the National Institutes of Health recognize the need for proper and timely diagnosis, education, and treatment of KD; and whereas the lack of public knowledge and understanding of the disease plays a significant role in the overwhelming numbers of underdiagnosed and untreated cases of KD; and the dissemination of inaccurate and misleading information contributes to the obstacles preventing diagnosis and treatment of the disease; and whereas there is a need to educate healthcare professionals, parents, and members of the public about this disease, particularly since people could unknowingly be at risk; and whereas studies by the Kawasaki Disease Research Center consistently reveal that through proper and comprehensive diagnosis and treatment, the systems and effects of KD can be substantially decreased, and the quality of life for the individual can be improved. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Ashley Selman, on behalf of Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the DuPage County Board, and members of the county board, do hereby designate January 26, 2022, as Kawasaki Disease Awareness Day in DuPage County, and encourage DuPage County residents to find out more about the signs and symptoms in order to seek the appropriate treatment. Do we have a motion and a second? Second? All in favor? And that's approved. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you so much. I want to thank the board and the chairman for this proclamation. Tomorrow is actually Kawasaki Awareness Day, and it's so important for people to understand the signs and symptoms of Kawasaki disease, because if it's caught early, your child can go on to live a normal life. But if not, children end up with severe consequences. So as many of you might know, our family had experience with this awful disease when our now 26-year-old, healthy daughter was diagnosed at seven. So, you know, when we think of children, we don't normally think of heart disease. And as mentioned, Kawasaki is the number-one cause of acquired heart disease among children. And repeating myself, with proper diagnosis and treatment, most kids will go on to live a healthy life. So I thought it was important, so you can see what Kawasaki looks like. So I have some slides, and if we can see the first slide, I think it's the cracked lips and the... Or am I supposed to do it? I don't know. Okay, yeah. Yeah, so one of the signs of Kawasaki is these red, dry, cracked lips, and a swollen tongue that has like little bumps on it, and it does look like a strawberry. So if we go on to the next slide? Conjunctiveitis, right? Red eyes, our daughter's eyes were also swollen, almost shut, but she had the red eyes without the discharge. So that's another sign. So when you see those red eyes and the red lips, be on the lookout. And then the swollen lymph nodes in the neck, get very big and swollen, another sign of it. And then the rash can be all over the body, and the swollen hands and feet, and, you know, the soles of their feet, and they're very uncomfortable, very high fever. So if you see this on a child, and the parents don't know what to do, get them to a doctor right away, because like I said, once they get that treatment and they're diagnosed, they can go on to live a good, healthy life. So thank you.
Sure, sure.
Thanks so much, and I'm happy to be here today and to help raise awareness, public awareness of Kawasaki disease in light of Kawasaki Awareness Day tomorrow. According to the Kawasaki Disease Foundation, estimated 4,200 children are diagnosed with the disease each year. It is a serious illness that causes the inflammation of blood vessels throughout the body, which is why the cracked lips, the swelling, all of that, and largely affects, although not exclusively, young children under the age of five. Again, it is the leading cause of heart disease in children. And while there is no precise test to detect the disease in kids, the timely and astute diagnosis, early diagnosis, is so important. Again, if diagnosed early, there is an effective treatment. So we encourage all residents to be aware of the signs and symptoms. Take your child to their primary care provider if they're sick. Don't wait or put off a visit. Kawasaki disease can mimic other diseases and illnesses. As was mentioned early on, or a year ago, we talked about the multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children, or MISC amongst kids who are diagnosed with COVID-19. Now, clearly, not every child who's diagnosed with COVID-19 develops MISC, but in DuPage County, we have had a total of 12 cases. Their age ranges from zero, under one, to 17. Of those 12 cases, all 12 have had to be hospitalized. And all of those hospitalized, two-thirds have required intensive care unit admissions. All of them, I'm very happy to say, have recovered. However, it is, again, the importance of understanding that COVID-19 treats and affects individuals very, very differently. So please, again, get vaccinated, get boosted. We see the impact, the positive impact of that on adults and on children. We see that with hospitalization and other severe illness and death. So we appreciate this opportunity, and thank you for your time.
All right. I'm going to take this opportunity to fulfill a request from our Health Department Director Karen Ayala. Chairman Cronin has had the opportunity to meet frequently with our hospital partners to discuss the status of the healthcare system in addressing COVID-19. In a follow-up to a recent call, one of the hospital partners reached out to us with a significant need. We've heard about blood shortages across the country, and similar in other regions. DuPage County is also experiencing a significant and critical shortage of blood. Our hospital and healthcare partners are encouraging folks to please, if possible, donate blood. You can learn more by contacting the Verisite Blood Centers of Illinois, and it is an urgent need at this time of year, and especially this time in our pandemic. And our healthcare partners, thank you very much for helping them spread the word. That concludes my chairman's reports. Next up would be public comment. We just have one individual in person this morning, Andrew Ho. No, you have just three minutes to make whichever remarks you wish.
Thank you. I'm here regarding Ordinance Z 21-092. And I guess I'm here to ask for help with my marriage. Every morning, when my wife wakes up, she opens up a window, and we are forced to kind of see this nuisance of a structure that my neighbor and the petitioner created without a permit. It's been going on for over about a year and a half, and it's been nothing but a nuisance, not only construction, but I'm hoping that you guys will deny his petition, because again, the structure's built in a confirmed flood zone. I've lived in this house for about 14 years, and there's been at least seven major flooding events, where it takes anywhere from two to three weeks to dry. So having any sort of infrastructure or structure on a wetland is obviously not safe, and I'm more concerned that it's going to drive down my property value. So with that being said, I appreciate all your support, and thank you very much.
Thank you. That is all of our in-person comments, so Jason's going to come up and read our electronic comment.
Let me start at the top, and I apologize if I mispronounce anybody's name. First comment is from Sarah Campania, subject matter precinct maps. Thank you to the board members who voted no on the proposed precinct maps. If we do end up with these maps, at least a conversation was had that will hopefully prevent a mess like this from happening in the future. I know the legislation came from Springfield and not the county, but I also feel like 1,200 voters per precinct is far too large and will prohibit many from volunteering in the future. Not only will this drastically increase the amount of time required to be a precinct committee person, it will also increase the amount of money spent on printing and postage. The proposed maps would essentially triple my current precinct size, making it virtually impossible for me to volunteer as a parent with young children who also works from home. End of that public comment. Next comment is from Kim Savage, subject matter precinct maps. As the former Democratic Chair of Downers Grove Township, I have gone through one major remap in 2012 and precinct boundary adjustments several times. There has been very little opportunity for input, at least from the Democratic Party. One time, I was able to get two changes done. One was to change a ridiculous precinct that was bisected by Argonne, requiring voters from one end of the precinct to leave the precinct and drive four miles to get their polling place. The other was to get an apartment building moved from one precinct to an adjoining precinct, so that it was more workable, same year. The Republicans had to agree. Needless to say, the election commission staff had more time to draw the precinct maps because the legislative and congressional maps were available sooner. Another time, I had a staff member from the election commission apologize to me for a small chunk that was moved from one precinct to another to accommodate a prominent Republican. A few years ago, we were all in the flat because they cut down the size of the precincts. Usually, there is more time for the remappers to deal with it, but the first cut is to make the precincts comply as much as possible with district boundaries. Then they start fine-tuning the precincts, which takes several years. They start in Wayne Township and get to Downers Grove in about six years. I believe my precinct was cut in half for the 2016 or 2018 election cycle. It is my experience that the election staff worked very hard to accomplish their task, and the precinct drawing process is complex due to numerous county, state, and federal districts. That combined with legislation and prescribed precinct size and polling location requirements is a daunting task. They should be applauded for their work. Since this is the first time the county board has had to approve the maps and has no experience with overseeing elections, I would hope that they defer to the staff hired to do the work on their behalf. Respectfully, Kim Savage, end of that public comment. Next public comment is from Mary Jo Mullen, subject county board special call meeting public comment. Good morning. Please see my public comment below for this morning's special call meeting. If possible, I'd appreciate it to be read aloud. Thank you. My name is Mary Jo Mullen, and I'm Resident O'Leary. I apologize I cannot be there in person, but I have to take my kids to school at this time. The clerk's office worked diligently to create the precinct maps presented at Tuesday's meeting. They had a short timeframe, and they focused on the changes in the laws that govern these maps. I personally would like to thank them for their hard work and attention to what is important, meeting mandates and creating the maps that are not affiliated or influenced by political parties or elected individuals. This fairness approach is exactly what Clerk Kazmerk promised us when she was elected, taking the partisanship out of government processes. On Tuesday, several members of my own party tried to insert their partisanship in constant struggle for personal power back into the equation. It was just a year ago that these same individuals espoused how wonderful primaries were and that we should let the voters decide. Now the story has changed because it personally benefits them. This is the least democratic approach I can think of, and I am appalled at their comments. I ask that the board members today, especially Democratic members, put these personal differences and petty power struggles aside. It's time to work together, focus on the mandate, and allow the voters to be in the driver's seat of who is a precinct committee person. Some of you oppose the redraw of the maps because you thought it didn't, it shouldn't be influenced by where any elected official lived. I agree that there should be no influence on where people live, and this is the same situation, no matter where current PCs live. What is important is that the line of the map, and if it meets the mandate. Please adopt the maps, allow the electoral and petition process to proceed, and let the voters decide. Thank you. End of that public comment. Next public comment is from Eugene Brandis, subject recent county board maps meetings. I'd like to thank the county board for not cowering to pressure from Jean Kazmerk's office to instill maps that were clearly drawn with political aspirations in mind, minor changes to the Republican side and major changes to the Democratic side, which just so happened to be to the ones in the party whom don't align with Jean and her ilk, where all the evidence needed to see through this charade. I'm thoroughly disappointed in Jean Kazmerk and the job she has done here in DuPage County. As an activist for years, she fought tooth and nail to win this job, and once in office, has disappeared from the public view, allowing her staff to do all the work. Instead, she works to disenfranchise precinct committee men to entrust herself and others who align with her in power. I will vote blue across the board come November, with the exception of the county clerk race. End of public comment.
All right, thank you, Jason. Next up, I'll take a motion on consent items. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy. Selman.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is county board. Member Zay, please.
Thank you, Chairman Selman. I move on CBR 6020, the appointment of Used Member Ne'er to the DuPage County Board of Health.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez. Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy. Selman.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
All ayes. Member Zay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move on CBR 6222, the appointment of Anthony Ginti to the DuPage Airport Authority.
Leave is granted. Member Zay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move on CBR 6422, the appointment of Joshua Davis to the DuPage Airport Authority.
Madam Chair, can we get a vote, you sort of, on this one, please? A roll call vote? Yep, that's always in order. Yep, that's always in order. So there's been a motion and then we'll have Member Chaplin be the second. And then can we please do a roll call?
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert, Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy. Selman. And Tornatori.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you, Members Zay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next up is Finance. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a brief update from our Finance Committee meeting. We were all so sad to say goodbye to our great Secretary Administrative Assistant Dana. And we all just want to wish her well. So I just wanted to update the committee on that. And with that, I move approval of FIR 005022, recommendation for the amendment to the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, HHS American Rescue Plan Act Grant Intergovernmental Agreement from $8,482,200 to $6,505,455, a reduction of $1,976,745.
Is there a second? All right. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert, Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge. Schwartzy. Selman. Tornatori. And Zay.
Motion carries. Thank you. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 005422, resolution additional appropriation for the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Wheel National Dislocated Worker Disaster Recovery Grant Intergovernmental Agreement, $67,320.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 005922, budget transfers from various companies and accounting units.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 006122, authorization of a contract with International Union of Operating Engineers Local 399 for the employees of DuPage County facilities.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of FIP 005222, recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to Costco International, doing business as see a short company provide employee service awards for milestone anniversaries. This contract covers a period of June 1st, 2022 through May 31st, 2023 for human resources. Contract amount not to exceed $53,400.
Yeah, Member Renahan or Rutledge, sorry, if you'd like to make comment.
Thanks. Just a quick comment here. And I've talked about this every year that this comes around. It's not the money I object to here, but our landfills don't need any more chachkeys. I would like to see a different way to honor these employees, but I'll be voting yes today.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Anybody want to ask for leave? All right. Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 006622, resolution grant between the County of DuPage and the DuPage Foundation for the County ARPA Nonprofit Grant Program in the amount of $10,600,000.
Member Chaplin, sorry, do you want to take F first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Corrected F. Okay. Let's do, I move on FIR 006522, resolution authorization to transfer $67,175 in the budget to the Clerk Circuit Courts fiscal year 2022.
There's been a request for leave. Leave is granted.
Thank you. Now I move approval on FIR 006622, grant agreement between the County of DuPage and the DuPage Foundation for the County ARPA Nonprofit Grant Program in the amount of $10,600,000.
Yeah, there's been a motion and a second. We could do comment and then we'll go back to you to make a motion on the other part. So, Member Desart.
Okay, thank you. I move that we amend the contract to read, the application evaluation team shall include two county representatives. The county representatives shall be, one, the county's Director of Community Services or a staff member appointed by the county board chairman, and two, the Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee.
Second.
Right. So there's been a motion and a second on the amendment. So are there any questions or comments or discussion on the amendment? Members Zay.
Yeah, so I'm confused now. It says and two. So that means the chairman's appointing two?
No, this is saying that there'll be two spots. One for the Director of Community Services or another staff member as determined by our chairman and then the Chair of HHS.
And Members Zay, this was written by the state's attorney, so.
Okay.
Good clarification. Any other comments, questions, or discussion on this item?
And just for clarification on that, it's my understanding from talking with Mary yesterday on this, that clause is in there in case Mary can't make it, then the chairman has the ability to appoint another staff person. So.
And the Member DeCiani, were you seeking?
I think this is a good amendment, having served in that capacity. I think it's important that we have representation from the county board overseeing this as well. So bipartisan spirit, I think it's a good move. So thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the amendment? All right. Seeing none, Mr. Deputy Clerk, could we please take a roll call on that amendment?
Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge. Schwartzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. And Covert.
All right. So the amendment passes, so we're back to the original. In which we have a motion and a second on the original as well. That's proper, right, Mr. Deputy Clerk? We had a motion and a second. The request for leave, would you prefer we do a roll call? Okay. Let's just do a roll call to make sure we're tidy. Sure. Member Desart.
Do we have to make a motion and a second on the contract as amended?
Oh, do you want to turn your mic on? The next one, if you're ready. I'm trying to. Yep, there you go.
I think it would be cleaner, Member Chaplin, if you withdrew the first, if we could withdraw that first second, the first motion, and then now you make a motion on the resolution with the amendment that we passed.
Sorry.
I will withdraw my original motion.
Okay.
And who was the second?
I believe it, Members Zay.
Okay.
All right. So now, yep.
So I move to approve FIR 00622, grant agreement between the County of DuPage and the DuPage Foundation as amended in the amount of $10,600,000.
Perfect. All right. Now we have a motion and a second on the item as amended. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. And Zay.
All right. Motion carries.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 006722, revision to the Personnel Budget Finance Department ARPA item.
Is there a request for leave?
Leave.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 006822, appropriation of the $75,000 to ChooseDuPage to implement a man.
Is there a request for leave? Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 006922, approval of an agreement with ChooseDuPage to implement and manage a supply diversity program in the amount of $75,000.
Request for leave? Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Chaplin.
Thank you.
Next up is Development. Member Tornatori, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would move approval of DCO 0008-22, Ordinance C 2186, to approve a conditional use to allow an existing shed to remain less than three feet from the rear property line.
All right. We've had a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge. Schwartzy. And Selman.
Aye.
Motion carries. Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, or thank you, Madam Chair. I move approval of DCO 009-22, Ordinance C 2192, to approve a variation to increase the height of a shed from 15 feet to approximately 24 feet, a conditional use to increase the total permitted area of its detached accessory building remaining 50 square feet to approximately 926 square feet.
A second.
This would require a three-quarters majority vote, as it was denied by the zoning hearing officer and the development committee. So a no vote to this would be consistent with the zoning hearing officer and the development committee.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Miss, Member Eckoff, seeking recognition?
I just had a question for staff. If this gets voted down, the neighbor said that it's already half-built. How long will the person who started the build have to take it down?
Do we have Paul Haas on the line?
Paul, or?
I don't know if Paul's on, but I can tell you that it's already in adjudication. And that's the basis for this attempt to rezone it, to bring it into compliance. If it is voted down, it'll continue through the adjudication process. If the homeowner does not comply, then it'll have to go through the normal process of going to court to appeal the adjudicator's decision.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Yep, Member Chavez.
Are we, is this the one that we had public comment on today?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
No.
Zay.
No.
Chaplin. Chavez.
No.
Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
No.
Hart.
No.
Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
No.
Schwartzy. And Selman.
No.
That motion fails. Mr., sorry, Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve DCO 10-22, Ordinance C 2193, zoning hearing officer and development committee's recommendation to approve a conditional use to allow an existing shed to remain less than three feet from the interior site.
A second. Motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy. And Selman.
Aye.
Motion passes. Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would move to approve DCO 12-22, Ordinance C 2199, a zoning hearing officer and development committee's recommendation to approve a conditional use to allow an existing screen room to remain less than 10 feet from the rear interior site property line, a conditional use to allow an existing shed to remain less than 10 feet where it existed for at least five years, and a conditional use to increase the total permitted area of a detached accessory building.
There's been a request for leave. Leave is granted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve DCO 13-22, Ordinance C 21101, a zoning hearing officer's recommendation to approve a conditional use to increase the total permitted area of a detached accessory building, a conditional use to allow an existing shed to remain less than 10 feet from the interior site property line.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Tornatori.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next up, economic development. Member Chavez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move approval of EDR 005522, a resolution for the DuPage County Convention and Visitors Bureau. This is the designation of representation for grant purposes.
All right. There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? All right. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge. Schwartzy. Selman. Tornatori. Zay. And Chaplin.
Aye.
Thank you, Member Chavez. Next up is environmental. Member Rutledge, please.
Thank you, Chair. No report today.
Well, that's speedy. Thank you very much. Next up then is Health and Human Services. Member Renahan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move approval of HHS R 5222 Resolution, 2022 Annual Action Plan, DuPage County Consortium First Reading, Acceptance of the 2022 Annual Action Plan Element. Public comment period of the 2020 to 2024 Consolidated Plan for Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership and Emergency Solutions Grant Programs to Qualify and Receive HUD grant funds.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan. Rutledge. Schwartzy. Selman. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. And Pachowski.
Motion carries. Thank you, Member Renahan.
Thank you. I move approval of HHS R 5122, Recommendation for Approval of a Fifth Modification to a CDBG Agreement with Kids Above All, Project CD 19-12, Lyle and Downers Grove Group Home Rehabilitation, Reducing Scope of Work, Reducing Funding for a Total Award of $30,043.56 and Extending a Completion Date through February 25, 2022.
All right. Request for leave. Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of HHS P 4822, Approval of Contract Purchase Order to KCIUSA DBA 3M Medical Solutions for Rental of Wound-Backed Therapy System and Medical Supplies for Wound Care and Skincare for the Care Center, January 26, 2022 through January 31, 2023, not to exceed $46,000.
Second most favorable role.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of HHS P 4922, Recommendation for Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Washburn Machinery Inc. for Laundry Equipment Repair and Parts as Needed for the Care Center, February 1, 2022 through January 31, 2023, not to exceed $35,000.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of Authorization for Overnight Travel for the Community Services Manager to Attend the National Human Services Data Consortium for Ongoing Training to Support Homeless Management Information System and Continuum of Care in Minneapolis, Minnesota, March 27 to 31, 2022, $2,363.50.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of the Community Services HMIS Database and Report Specialists to Go on the Same Trip for $2,363.50.
Second most favorable role.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Renahan. Next up is Judicial and Public Safety. Member Renahan.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move approval of JPSP 4522, Approval of a Contract Curry Motors Commercial Center for the Purchase of Seven 2022 Ford Utility Police Interceptors for the Coroner for a Total Contract Not to Exceed $308,518. Two will be purchased through the General Fund and five through the Coroner's Fee Fund.
We're on another section of the agenda, so we need a second. All right. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert. Desart. Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. And Pachowski.
Motion carries. Member Renahan?
Thank you. I move approval of JPSP 4722, Recommendation for Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Northeast DuPage and Youth and Family Services to Provide Services to Youth Who Are at Risk of Domestic Violence and Trauma, February 1, 2022 through January 31, 2023, not to exceed $38,000. This is for Probation and Court Services.
All right, leave is granted. Thank you, Member Renahan. Next up Legislative. Member Desart?
Thank you. Um, starting with an FYI, um, and a reminder, the NACO Legislative Conference is taking place in Washington, DC, February 12 through the 16th. Due to an increased spread of COVID-19 in the District of Columbia, NACO has taken the decision to offer the conference remotely as well as in person. I attended this conference remotely last year in 2021, and it was really excellent. It was an excellent way to gain insight and to learn from the experts. So whether you'd like to attend this conference in person or remotely, please talk to Cheryl R. Kay as soon as possible. Secondly, this afternoon during our Legislative Committee meeting, at 1 o'clock, we will be voting to approve our Springfield Legislative Agenda. It was, very much aligns with DuPage's, DuPage County's past initiatives. One specific item to note, um, when I was in San Diego for the Public Housing Commissioners Conference, I got a call from Mark Ayers. Most of you know Mark, and know that he is an ally in our successful efforts to, uh, pass humane pet store laws last, uh, session. Mark called to let me know that a bill was filed in January to repeal that humane pet store law. So that is definite legislation we will be lobbying against. Again, that comes up during our Legislative Committee meeting at 1 o'clock today. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Member Desart. Next up is Public Works. Member Ozog?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, by way of Chair Report, I want to thank our Public Works Department. I want to thank our Facilities Maintenance Department. We are in the midst of winter and about to enter a bad week in terms of cold snap, et cetera. So, uh, I thank everybody who works outside during this period. So, let's hope it passes quickly. Um, I'd like to move for approval of PWCO 00422, PWP 0106, or 06A21, an Amendment to a Resolution, PWP 010621, issued to Visu Sewer of Illinois, to supply additional CIPP sanitary sewer lining for Public Works, to increase the contract in the amount of $4,104.75, taking the original contract amount of $241,780, and resulting in an amendment contract total amount not to exceed $245,884.75, an increase of 1.7%.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Ozog.
Yes.
Pachowski. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy. Selman. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart. Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
And LaPlante.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, Member Ozog. Next up is Technology. Um, and my Vice Chair, Greg Hart, please.
Thank you, Member Solomon. I move on TEP 0051-22, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract to SHI International Corp. for the Procurement of Hardware and Licensing of Network Equipment to Expand the Courthouse Wireless System for IT.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart. Diciani. Eckoff. And Garcia.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, Member Hart.
I don't think we heard Member Garcia.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Hart. Next up is Transportation. I believe, Member Ozog, you're filling in, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I move for approval of TTR 004922, Resolution Additional Appropriation for Impact Fee Service Area Five Fund Milton Township Company 1500 Accounting Unit 3645, $500,000.
It's been, all right, there's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartzy. Selman. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart. Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski. And LaPlante.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. I move for approval of DTP 005022, Recommendation for Approval of a Contract to Altor for Industries Incorporated to Furnish and Deliver One Caterpillar Mini-Hydraulic Excavator for the Division of Transportation for a Contract Total Not to Exceed $166,150 per Sourcewell Contract 032119-CAT.
It's been requests for leave. Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Ozog.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda is Discussion. This is PA 99-0645, Pension Obligation Projections Required by Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act. Is anyone seeking recognition? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item, which is Old Business. Is anyone seeking recognition under Old Business? Is it, Member Ozog?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I want to make a reference to our, uh, meeting two weeks ago and our special call meeting on Friday. Uh, we, two, a week and a half ago. Uh, today we heard some public comments regarding what had happened regarding the precinct map. And I want to point out that on October 26, the Legislative Committee met, and when I look at the minutes for that meeting, um, it was, uh, explained through our lobbyists that there would be a, uh, the Clerks' Associations were approving and our, as we all know, our, um, Legislative Committee had also, we'd all approved for the last two years that reducing this, or increasing the number of people in precincts was part of our legislative plan. And, um, I noticed here that, um, it was discussed that, um, Member Desart made a comment about this, uh, saving money, and that our county clerk was in favor of it. I believe there was some comment by Mr. Zay regarding, uh, that this had, the size of precincts had been reduced sometime in the past. And, uh, then, uh, we moved in this, uh, meeting, moved on to discussions. Member LaPlante and Member Selman both discussed the forest preserve map. And then when I go on further to look at, um, previous agendas, uh, there was a, a meeting of the Legislative Committee canceled in November, and then in December, uh, again, this issue did not come up, and then they did not meet again until, uh, today. And I just wanted to say that when, or I want to say, that this was law, and I am very disappointed with the result of how this was handled. Every township was impacted, every party was impacted, but this was something, increasing the number of people in the precincts was something that we had approved as a legislative initiative, and it was passed, and it was approved by our legislator. So I believe that we did not support the law, and we did not uphold what was supposed to be done here. And I am personally really disturbed by attacks toward our clerk, because I believe the clerk and the election division did what they were asked in a nonpartisan way, and they were asked to do this by the legislator. And I need to make that statement today, because our clerks throughout the country, our election divisions throughout the country are being targeted, and we need to make sure that we have the most impartial, fair, and good elections. And I believe that our election division and our county board as supporting them, our new election machines in the past that we voted on, is the best way that we can do that personally in this county. So again, I'm expressing my disappointment that we did not follow the law that we were asked to follow. Thank you.
Anyone else seeking recognition under Old Business? Member Zay?
Yes, uh, personal privilege since my name was invoked. You know, I guess we just don't get it. We can approve our changed laws, but if a law is made, I think what many people on this board said is that we didn't approve of the map because there was no input from this board. There was no transparency, as there was in the past with the Election Commission, with bipartisan map making and having input. That's what it came down to, plain and simple. And we had asked for input, we weren't giving it to, giving it to us. So you can try to rewrite whatever you would like, or say whatever you'd like. That was my main reason, because we didn't have any input on it. And when a law is made and it says the county board shall and the county board may, then the county board needs to be part of that process, and it wasn't. Plain and simple.
Thank you, Member Zay. Anyone else seeking recognition under Old Business today? All right. Yep, Member Renahan?
Yeah, I just want to talk a little bit more about this process real briefly, because nowhere in the law does it say that the parties need to be consulted. And as far as the way we conduct business, I mean, every time we get a packet, we've got a certain amount of days to review it, and we got six days to review this map. So I, I really, I really admire our clerk, that she was not bending to any kind of partisan requests, and I think that's just a very important point to make.
Member Chaplin?
Thank you. And, you know, we did hear from our Downers Grove Township, the former chair of the Downers Grove Township Democratic Party, who had been chair for many, many years, and, um, she said previously, the township chairs were never invited. Now, maybe some Republicans went into the Election Commission to work on the maps, but the Democrats were, and I, I remember this because I've been involved with the party for a long time too, and the Democrats did not have a seat at the table. Our clerk made the best effort she could to do this in a nonpartisan way. And I understand that some people don't feel that we had enough time to review the maps, but let's not forget that the clerk took this on, um, and did it, you know, I mean, it did, it, the legislation did charge the county board with it. And, you know, we could have given the clerk some direction. So I think there's, it's a little give and take on both sides. But you know what? It's done. What's done is done. It's done. We can't, we can't go back and fix it, but you know what we can do? We can move forward and try to improve things going forward. And that would be my best advice to everyone. So thank you.
Member Desart, and then Member Diciani.
Sure, I, it's, I'd like to add my congratulations to the clerk. I mean, sh, she is a Democrat, but once she was elected to county clerk, she has to serve all of the voters. And in following this precinct map to the letter of the law, she served all of the voters and took in all of the voters when coming up with the map. And, um, the other part I wanted to mention is, um, those folks who are saying that, that they didn't have a seat at the table, you could have had a seat at the table. Had the county chairman done his job and established an ad hoc committee to do precinct maps, or, or reengage the redistricting committee, you talked about precinct maps, there would have been committee input. This law says county board dozens of times, and county clerk only a few times. So if people are lamenting not having a seat at the table, they should have suggested to the county chairman that a committee be established. Thank you.
All right, I do just want to clarify. I know there are multiple members of this board of both parties who had reached out to the clerk during this whole process. So I don't want it to seem like this board didn't do its part of its job. I think we all tried, and we've learned that maybe this process wasn't great, and we've got some things to learn from next year. Or next time, I guess it's about a decade we get to live with this. Anything else under Old Business this morning? Oh, I'm sorry, Member Diciani?
That's okay. I just want to, um, mention, um, kind of a shot was taken at our Legislative Chair, and I've, I've had issues that I've brought to Member Desart, Chairwoman Desart, and she's always been responsive, uh, to, uh, local issues that, uh, we, we brought her, we just, we changed a couple laws with special needs children for transition, and she got those on her agenda right away and got those approved. So, um, I don't, I don't like when people take shots at other people who've done, in my opinion, a pretty decent job at, uh, at chairing the committee. So, um, naturally, we're all frustrated with the, the situation with the maps. Um, I wish our clerk would engage us and come to our meetings and have dialogue. I think it would be really important and respectful to this board. Who approves her budget? And his job is to, to, to take the minutes of this, of our meetings. So it's, I'm hoping that we can engage her and get her to come to work. So, thank you.
Anyone else seeking recognition under Old Business? I see Member Ozog.
Uh, I brought this up again to express my disappointment. I am taking no shots at especially Member Desart. Um, however, it is the clerk's discretion how she chooses to do her job, and to say that she should show up for work infers that she's not doing her job. And there was some discussion made last week about Mr. Berlin not showing up, and we all know that he is certainly doing his job. He sends a representative. The clerk sends a representative. That is her prerogative, but we know that there is a lot of other opportunity, that other, other responsibilities that she has. So how she chooses to do her job is indeed up to her. There are people who may not be at various meetings. Meetings can be canceled, et cetera. But I am, again, disappointed, because there were, there was opportunity back in October to discuss if we were going to be, how are we going to approach this? And this could have been part of perhaps reinstituting the, um, the map committee, et cetera. But, um, I think it's really unfortunate to take potshots at how somebody does their job when I believe they are doing their job. Thank you.
Anyone else seeking recognition under Old Business? All right, seeing none? New Business? Anyone seeking recognition? Old, New Business? Member Schwartzy, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Um, I recently received, uh, many of us actually recently received a, uh, an email from a, uh, a resident, uh, who is a big proponent of our, our trails and our bike paths. And he had some, uh, safety concerns regarding the, uh, the Great Western Trail at County Farm Road just south of St. Charles Rome, uh, St. Charles Road, uh, in District Six. And, um, I did chat a little bit with our Transportation Chairman Pachowski earlier, and I did let him know that I was going to bring this up to, to staff, just to have discussion. Um, and, and there's probably multiple, uh, trails that would fall into this category where you have a high-speed four-lane road. I, I think the, uh, the stoplights between, on County Farm between Geneva and St. Charles, the speed limit's around 40, and, and of course, it's a big stretch of road where people are going pretty fast. So, um, the resident brought up, uh, maybe putting flashing crosswalk signs or something along those lines, which staff did say is, it would actually probably cause more of a problem than, than, than prevent, uh, the danger. Um, so, I, I, and I, and I also know that, uh, staff did a wonderful job putting together a trail, um, survey to the public, which they received over 2,300 responses. And, um, while it was wonderful, that 49% of, of those respondents said there was no concern for danger of any sort, uh, the next highest percentage was 33%, which did say crossing trails is, is their biggest concern. So, um, is there, is staff from the Transportation Department here, maybe share some of their thoughts, um, possibly, um, stoplights, maybe putting a stoplight at Hawthorne, maybe putting a chain link fence up that goes to St. Charles where there's already a stoplight, um, something along those lines?
Um, Nick, do, do you know if there's anyone who wants to respond? Okay. Chris Snyder?
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm on mute. Can, can you hear me now?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so thank you. Um, and, and thank you, Member Schwartzy. Uh, yesterday, uh, Member Schwartzy and I did have a brief discussion. I've also talked to Committee Chair Pachowski, and Member, Member Rutledge also reached out. So, um, it is a crossing, uh, we've, I've seen the email, um, you know, the, the, there is a perception, um, about the crossing and its, uh, safety. Uh, there is no issue currently at that crossing with regard to safety and accidents. Um, we have upgraded that location, um, recent, relatively recently. We had, traditionally, we just had signs on the side of the road. We now have mast arms that go, go across the road to advise people of the location. Um, we are working on the Trails Plan that was mentioned earlier, and part of the, the emphasis, um, of that plan will be to, to look at safety and identify needs and priorities across the system and implement strategies, um, you know, consistently, you know, at all locations. And so, you know, um, the, the things suggested in, in the email, the flashers, um, work, um, ideally at certain locations. A multi-lane, four-lane road is not one of those locations. Um, so we've looked at, uh, we've looked at fencing, is that an option? The near signal's 1,000 feet away. So getting somebody to go 1,000 feet out of the way when they can go 200 feet to the south, to the next intersection and go around it. Um, so you can see it's not necessarily as straightforward of a response, but I think incorporating this location and all our crossings, you know, as part of that Trails Plan, and identify a consistent treatment across the, across the board would, would be, you know, um, you know, is a good purpose and, and goal of that, of that transportation, I'm sorry, that Trails Plan.
Thank you very much, Chris. And, um, with that survey still sort of under review, is there the potential to, to look at intersections like this all throughout the, uh, the county and, and maybe address it at a future date?
Of course. Of course. Yeah, there was, you know, 50% said no issues, 33%, you know, there wasn't an ask for specific locations. Um, so we'll be focusing on the county highway